Do I have a motion to close the executive session?
I'm out of here.
Motion, trustee Alpert?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion, Alpert, second.
Okay.
Who's the second?
Joe.
Joe Corrigan?
Motion to close the special meeting.
You didn't say your favor on the other?
Motion.
All in favor?
Motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Sorry for the delay. Welcome to the Board of Trustees' meeting. It is now 7:40. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And as we always do, let's remain standing and think about our men and women serving our country in the armed forces. Thank you. Trustee Corrigan.
Present.
Trustee Barone.
Present.
Trustee Solomon.
Present.
And trustee Alpert.
Present.
Thank you. Next regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 13th at 7:00 PM. The next workshop meetings are suspended for July and August. Workshop meetings will resume Monday, September 27th at 7:00 PM. I'd like to motion to open the public hearing to amend the Village Code, Chapter 154, entitled "Grills." Motion, trustee Alpert?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Magrino?
Yes, I've just checked with the clerk that all the appropriate notices were posted. Thank you. So this came with the request of our fire inspector, Mr. Gordon, who will ask to come up. This is a section that's unique to Suffolk, and I'll let him explain that the New York State Fire Code has, in essence, superseded this, and so it's provided for some confusion. So I'll ask Mr. Gordon to step up and explain the reasoning for presenting this to the board tonight.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Adam Gordon. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the Village Fire Inspector, and I think Attorney Magrino pretty much summed it up, but I'll try to make it as quick as possible. The Village of Suffolk had a code from 1974 that predated the state code's requirements in an effort to probably make it a little safer and have a fireproof coating over decks. Many years since then, the state fire code has come in and superseded that requirement, and it doesn't allow any open flame cooking devices on decks, balconies, in multifamily dwellings. So I just asked that we get rid of this old code because it's causing problems. People are going online and saying, hey, wait, take a look, the Village Code allows it under certain conditions where it doesn't anymore because the state fire code supersedes it. So I hope that sums it up.
Is there anyone from the public that has any comment? Ford?
I have a question. Will residents that are not, let's say, present at this meeting or at this hearing be in some way notified of this change?
Well, currently, the current code doesn't allow, and frankly, I think in practice, really, nobody is putting grills in these multifamilies, correct?
No, there are a couple of old existing ones which have kind of been on top of and has to be removed, so.
But, well, you know, we provide a public notice, and this will be a, you know, it will be posted that it was, if it's passed, that it was passed. And in essence, it'll be the state code, which, you know, admittedly is harder to find, but Mr. Gordon is, you know, available if people have questions, they can certainly call him.
I'm just suggesting that perhaps the village can also show this change in one of our newsletters that go out to the public. I think it would be a prudent thing because there may be some that will utilize the old law.
Yes.
And just one more point, we did send, I did send out letters to all the multifamily apartment buildings already.
Oh, good.
And let them know that this is, the code is the state code, so.
Very good, thank you.
I'm sorry, just for the record, I'm sorry, County Planning has chimed in, and they've recommended approval, leaving it to the local jurisdiction.
Terrific. And once it's enacted, we can do the same with the mailing, with the email and the letter that we sent out.
Sure.
And post it on the website.
Okay, terrific. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have the resolution here, adopting local law of 2021, entitled "Outdoor Grills." Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second, trustee Alpert. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passing. A motion to open up a public hearing for local law to amend the Village Code, Chapter 175, entitled "Noise."
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, trustee Alpert.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, again, we have the appropriate notices, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. So this, if you recall, Mr. Rice was here requesting an amendment to the Village Code regarding indoor theaters and permission for indoor theaters to operate without, with certain exceptions to the noise code in the Village of Suffolk. This proposed section provides an opportunity for indoor theaters to come in and apply for permission, for a permit, for certain exceptions to the noise code, and it does provide for conditions that the board can impose. I know the board has discussed this somewhat. There's two steps, really. The first is this law, so that the board will be authorized to grant permission, so the first thing would be tonight to entertain this law. The second, if it passes, if the theater decides to come in for a permit, would then for the board to entertain the permit and impose the conditions.
Wonderful. Is there anyone from the public here that would like to speak? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address.
So this is going to be like a special permit?
Well, it's not going to be a special permit in the zoning code. It will be a permit that the board issues for exceptions to the noise code.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with the zoning board or the planning board? It's the Board of Trustees?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone else? Have the resolution adopting the local law? Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have the resolution adopting the local law, 2021, entitled "Noise." Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
You gotta yell out who you're taking. You haven't given the names. Motion by trustee.
Yeah, I know, they're challenging each other here.
Pick one.
Who was first, Alpert? Trustee Alpert, excuse me. So who's the second?
I'm the second.
Trustee Corrigan. Okay. All in favor? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, on that one, the County Planning also weighed in and had no objection. County Planning also weighed in on that and had no objection.
Next, I have a motion to open a public hearing to amend local law, Village Code, Chapter 1, 205, and 266, entitled "Penalties and Offenses." Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Trustee Solomon. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Magrino?
Okay. The appropriate notices, Madam Clerk, have been filed out. So as maybe where, back in the beginning of 2020, there were changes to the discovery rules, the tenants here can certainly attest to that fact in the state of New York in terms of what needs to be provided and when in criminal prosecutions. It has created a significant change in the way criminal offenses are prosecuted in the state, certainly for the district attorney's offices and for local police departments. To the extent that the law created issues, it was amended by the state legislature and changed somewhat. One of the changes that they made was that it would not apply to items or prosecutions that did not carry jail sentences. In the zoning code and in the Village Code, there are a few offenses that do have a 15-day jail sentence assigned to them. What I'll say is, and I know the code enforcement officers are here tonight, but in my experience prosecuting here for the Village for several years and throughout the county, Village Code prosecutions never result in a jail sentence. What we're often looking for is compliance. What we're always looking for is compliance, and then obviously, if appropriate, a fine. The reason we're asking for this change, it would be to eliminate the jail sentence, the 15-day jail sentences, just for Village Code violations. The reason being not, it's not an effort not to provide discovery, the Village, the state code still provides that persons who are charged are entitled to discovery, but it changes the timing. Instead of it being within, which is now 30 days, I believe, of arraignment, it's now within 15 days of a trial. And the reason that this has come up, you know, again, the police department will attest to this, there have been numerous resources that have been dedicated to discovery for the police department. There's a whole system set up with the district attorney's office and with defense attorneys, et cetera. The building department, frankly, just doesn't have that capability, so this law recognizes the change that the state legislature made to treat these types of offenses differently. What I think was missed was that, you know, it could have said zoning offenses or code violations, but they, if it had a jail sentence to it, the state legislature still wanted to restrict discovery. This gives a little more flexibility. Again, items will be turned over, but it's not the same level as what the police deal with, with misdemeanors and felonies that they're dealing with now. So that's the reason that this has been proposed, and again, it's been sent to County Planning, and they had no objection to it.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have the resolution adopting the local law of 2021, entitled "Penalties for Offenses." Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a presentation by Clean Energy by Peggy Kurtz. Ms. Kurtz?
Yep, that's me. Okay, hi. Good evening.
Hello.
So my name is Peggy Kurtz. I'm the community coordinator for the Rockland Community Power Program. I also want to mention that I live in Rockland County. I live in Clarkstown. Rockland Community Power is a community-based clean energy program. It launched last winter in Rockland with six Rockland communities, Clarkstown, Orangetown, Nyack, South Nyack, Upper Nyack, and the Village of Havestra. A new Rockland group is forming, and we're hoping that Suffolk will want to participate. Rockland Community Power is what's called a community, and you can follow along on the handout. Okay, so now I'm on page two. Rockland Community Power is what's called a Community Choice Aggregation Program, or CCA for short. CCA programs are overseen by the Public Service Commission, and they are actively promoted by two other state agencies, DEC and NYSERTA, or New York State Energy Research and Development Authority. Some of the benefits include clean energy, guaranteed electric rates, these programs have the potential to lower costs, much stronger consumer protection, and more choices for consumers, and I'll talk about each of those. In 2019, I'm on slide three, in 2019, New York State passed groundbreaking climate legislation which required an unprecedented transformation of the state's electric grid. The electric grid must be powered 70% by renewable energy by 2030, so that's less than eight and a half years away at this point, and it must be 100% carbon-free by 2040. The state cannot meet these urgently needed goals, which will ultimately help protect our own communities without action by local governments. The program we're discussing today helps communities take a major step in the direction of those goals. Through the Rockland Community Power Program, over last winter, over 20,000 Rockland households switched to clean energy at lower costs than they had paid in the previous two years through ONR. Usually, now I'm on slide four, usually consumers have to pay a premium for clean energy. The goal here of this program, the gist of this program, in a nutshell, is to help communities make the transition to clean energy while protecting them from rate increases. Slide five. Through this program, I'm sorry, we tried to work out presenting, but it didn't work. Through this program, municipalities join together with other municipalities to create a large buying group through which residents and small businesses can purchase their electricity. I want to emphasize, this isn't about the municipal buildings, it's about the residents and the small businesses in the community. By leveraging the buying power of that large group, communities can choose clean energy as the default energy source while still keeping costs down, and I'll talk more about that. Now I'm on slide six. ONR remains as the electric utility. In New York State, the utility no longer actually supplies the energy. In 1998, PSC separated out delivery from supply in order to increase competition and lower costs, and the utility essentially has become the middleman, delivering the energy to the consumer. That's why this program, I really want to emphasize, does not affect ONR's revenue in any way. They no longer profit from the supply portion of the bill, they're just collecting the supply portion of costs. With this program, the state has moved the choice of default energy source down to the level of the community, closer to the consumer. ONR continues to deliver the electricity, repair and maintain the lines, bill the customers, and the most important one for all of us, they're still the ones to call in the event of a power outage. Now I'm on slide eight. The program is new in Rockland County, but CCA is a growing movement in New York State. It's already operating in 131 municipalities, with more communities coming on board all the time. The newest community is Rochester. Albany is also in the process of setting up a CCA program. CCA started in New York State with a pilot program in Westchester. Today, 2/3 of Westchester communities are participating in a similar program to what we're doing here in Rockland. The administrator for the program is JOULE Community Power, that's spelled J-O-U-L-E, like the energy unit. There are two pieces to JOULE's program, the base, clean energy electric supply, and community solar. It's not a choice between the two, the two programs complement each other. Both programs deliver clean energy and help lower costs, energy costs. Both provide much stronger consumer protection. Both are also opt-out programs. As the program administrator, it is our job to be sure that residents thoroughly understand the program. We begin with a lot of outreach. Once the program actually starts, an information packet, can you hear me? Yep, okay. An information packet is mailed to every eligible home with a postage-paid reply card to opt out if that is their preference. I want to emphasize, there are no contracts for consumers in this program. No contracts for anything in the program. Sorry.
Wire.
Okay. It's not just me, okay.
Don't touch it, just talk.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, I learned something. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, there are no contracts for anything in the program for consumers. Anyone can opt out at any time and with no fee. So let's focus first on the first piece, which is the base electric supply. Now I'm on slide 10, and to discuss the benefits for consumers. The program offers clean energy with low fixed rates, and I'll talk more about rates in a minute. The program provides much stronger consumer protection. This is a part of the program that I had not completely understood until I began working for the program. There are no contracts, as I mentioned, no exit fees, the rates are fixed, there's ongoing consumer support, and I'll talk a little more about it later. As a collaborative municipal program, this is entirely different, entirely different from the ESCOs or energy service companies, such as Green Mountain or Clean Choice, that mail to all of us, okay? With the ESCOs, usually you will be offered a low introductory, this is their basic business model, you'll be offered a low introductory rate, only to find out later that the rate has increased, often by quite a bit. Here, the rates are fixed for the life of the program, there are no surprises. So in terms of the benefits for the community, as I mentioned earlier, New York State climate programs promote this initiative as one of the highest impact steps a climate can take to reduce their carbon footprint, and I'll talk about state funding in a minute. This is a turnkey program. As administrator for the program, JOULE does the work for the community, and that includes public outreach, negotiation of contracts with energy suppliers, regulatory compliance, and ongoing customer service throughout the life of the program. There is no direct cost to the municipality or to consumers. JOULE collects the fees from the energy suppliers, and it amounts to about $7 per year for the average household, $7 per year. And again, that's from the energy supplier.
What would that be in comparison to?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know. I think what I wanted to emphasize is that it's not a high cost, and it is, does not, it is not directly from the, there's no charge to the municipality at all. I suppose ultimately, it's within the rates that the consumers are paying, but it's a very small amount, less than a dollar a month.
Okay.
So now I want to talk about rates, that's slide 13. So the average rates so far, this is what you're seeing on slide 13, Orange and Rockland is in the left-hand column. Please keep in mind two things as you look at this slide. Number one, Rockland Community Power's rate is fixed, it's guaranteed for the life of the program, it will not go up. Orange and Rockland is variable, month to month, and for that reason, because Orange and Rockland is variable, we can only compare the rates looking back. I can't tell you what Orange and Rockland's rates are going to be next month. Number two, Orange, to some extent, this is, to some extent, this is an apples and oranges comparison, Orange and Rockland rates are for what's called standard energy. Standard energy is largely based on fossil fuels. The Rockland Community Power rates are for 100% renewable energy.
Did you just say that the rate was for the lifetime?
Yes, that's correct.
So on the slide, it says for 24 months.
I'm sorry, for the lifetime of the program.
Lifetime of the program.
I think I said for the life of the program. The program, this program, the current program, Rockland Community Power Program lasts, the life of the program is for two years, 24 months. There's generally there for two years, sometimes there for three years. At the end of that, there's a whole new negotiation, and there are new rates that are set. Energy rates vary from one day to the next, so what it'll be in two years from now, I can't, nobody knows. Okay. So on the right, on the right, you're seeing the default, the rate for clean energy. Generally, in general, outside of this program, consumers who choose clean energy must pay a premium for the renewable energy, but the program has been able instead to offer low rates, at least to date. You can see it's lower than what Orange and Rockland rates are for standard energy. On slide 14, you can see the collective savings. In fact, through this program, so far, the 20,000 households that are on clean energy have collectively saved, collectively, saved over half a million dollars, it's close to For comparisons, to compare Suffolk, to give you a point of comparison with Suffolk, Nyack, which is, I think, a little bit smaller in terms of population than Suffolk, has collectively saved about $51,000 so far. On the level of the household, the savings with renewable energy come to about $29 over nine months. Again, the goal of the program is to transition to clean energy while protecting consumers from rate increases. So the program has more than delivered on that goal. That's in addition to a discount through the community solar portion of the program. For Rockland Community Power, so far, that is 10% guaranteed discount on the entire electric bill, delivery and supply. Okay, now moving to slide 15. Community information and engagement are very important parts of the program. I want to emphasize that while information and education begin even before the program starts, they also continue throughout the program, again, throughout the term of the program. That includes community meetings, ongoing community updates through print and e-newsletters, whatever is available, a call center for customers, Monday to Friday, 9 to 5, again, throughout the life of the program, local community coordinator, and ongoing social media presence. So now moving to slide 16. Up until now, I've been talking about the base electric supply. I mentioned that there was a second part of the program, and that is community solar. The energy for the base electric supply is from large utility-scale projects, currently hydro and wind from upstate. The second part of the integrated program is community solar, and this can be added on to the base electric supply. Through community solar, consumers help to support the development of smaller and more local renewable energy by subscribing to a share of a solar project in Orange County. There's no need to put solar panels on your roof. This is a solar project in Orange County. On slide 17, for consumers, there is a guaranteed discount on the entire electric bill. That's as a result of a state subsidy, part of which gets passed along to consumers. This part of the program is also opt-out, although I'm not sure why anyone would want to opt out of a discount. Again, there are no contracts for consumers and no exit fees. There are also no separate bills. There are also no credit requirements, so it really opens it up to everyone. Community solar also benefits the community, the municipality. In addition to the environmental benefits, the program administrator donates money to the community for local sustainability projects of the community's choice. Until now, from what I've seen, the most popular project is planting street trees, but I imagine it could also be used for, let's say, retrofitting lighting in Village Hall, something that would accrue more cost savings to you going forward. Just going very quickly, to be respectful of your time, funding is available through DEC, and this is now on slide 19, and NYSERTA for communities that participate in these programs, clean energy communities and climate smart communities programs. Slide 20, I'm trying to give you just a quick idea of the level of funding, at least through the, this is on slide 20, you see the level of funding for clean energy communities, and I can talk more about both of those programs. There's also very substantial funding available through climate smart communities, and again, I can talk more about that. Okay. Slide 21, if the village decides to pursue this further, the first step is to pass what's called a CCA-enabling law. Through the CCA-enabling law, the community explicitly assumes the authority that already exists through Home Rule to determine its own default energy source. The second step on slide 22 is for the village to choose an administrator for the program, which allows the administrator to move ahead with public education and other next steps. Neither of these steps bind the village into going forward with the program. It remains unbinding right up until the last step when contracts are signed with the suppliers. It's a three-way contract with the program administrator and all the communities. And finally, on slide 22, here's my contact information, and I'm glad to take your questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
I'd like to kind of summarize what you said. That if we go with this program, we would lower bills, electric bills for the village residents, and protect the future residents from worsening climate change by using this green energy.
So I have to be very careful about lower costs, okay? So I'm going to try to modify it in two ways. There is a guaranteed discount through the community solar program. So far, the community, the program doesn't start unless we're able to offer you lower costs than Orange and Rockland's, looking back two years, okay? That's what they did at the beginning of the Rockland Community Power program. However, we can guarantee our rates, but what we cannot guarantee is Orange and Rockland's rates, okay? That's, you know, nobody can say what their rates are going to be. It's been pretty reliable that the program rates do beat the utility rates, but I'm not, I've been told, and have been cautioned, not to say anything, I can't make projections about Orange and Rockland. That's the piece, that's what I was trying to say. Yes, and of course, this is, again, just to repeat, this is one of the most, I've literally heard state, you know, one of the top people in one of the state climate programs say this is one of the top programs, top programs that a village, I'm sorry, that a municipality can take to lower their carbon footprint. And for that reason, if you look at clean energy communities and you look at climate smart communities, you'll see the number of points that they award for these programs. I think community choice aggregation is the highest within the clean energy community program. Opt-out community solar is one of the highest.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a couple of questions. So you mentioned that there's no obligation, you know, you can go in, you can go out.
Yes.
Okay. So can someone?
There's no obligation until the final step, yeah.
Well, what I meant was, for a consumer that subscribes to this service.
Correct.
So let's say hypothetically now, you go in, you go for a few months, you're saving money, but then you anticipate maybe in a certain month, Orange and Rockland's rates are going to be cheaper. Can you come out for a few months and then come back in later?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
So you can go in and out as often as you want?
You can do that. Keep in mind that it does usually take at least one billing cycle to move you over, from my experience, is one billing cycle, depending on where you're billing. But if you're the kind of person who follows your bills really carefully, and you kind of have seen the peaks and the troughs of Orange and Rockland, you can do that. You can go in and out as many times as you want.
Okay, that's great. Next question I have is, you know, I know you were talking mostly about solar and community farms and so forth. Some of the pictures, some of the slides had images of windmills as well. Is that also part of the production?
Oh, I thought I had mentioned, yes. So most of it is, most of the base electric supply is hydro. There is a little bit of wind in there also. And eventually, there will be more offshore wind coming in too, once that comes online.
So it's sort of a mix?
It is a mix.
It's not just solar? It's the solar, this hydro?
It is primarily, the base electric supply is mostly hydropower, already existing hydropower, what they call legacy, it's been already existing for a while, from upstate.
Upstate, okay.
And then the community solar, obviously, is entirely solar.
So you're augmenting the hydro with solar?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Those can also ask, obviously, solar only produces during the daytime, so I suppose there's no solar coming into the grid at night?
Right, there is storage also, battery storage, and it all ultimately gets fed into the grid.
Okay.
And then you're kind of taking it out at the other end, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
No, thank you so much for the presentation.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good. Again, I just want to emphasize, it's not about the municipal buildings, it's about the community at large. And it's about helping the community make that transition without raising costs.
Does a certain percentage of the public need to sign up for this, for it to be something?
No, no. They figure that into the contract. They know approximately how much of the public opts out usually, and they figure that into the, in some way, that's figured into their contracts. So it's, no, it does not depend on that. What is true is we need to get a certain number of communities together, but that's, again, that's our job. We're talking to other communities in Rockland and in Orange County.
Is the rate that's quoted here, that's the rate, or is it subject to?
Okay, that's a good question, yeah. So that's the rate that is for the already existing Rockland Community Power program. So there's going to be a new group of communities that will come into the program, and that new group of communities, there will be a new rate that will be negotiated. Whether it'll be the same, or lower, or higher, I can't tell you. It's based on the energy market at that time, which is extremely dynamic.
Yeah.
So that's a really good question, and maybe I should have pointed that out. That's the rate for the already existing six communities. The new communities will come in at a new rate, but that has to be negotiated.
How's the energy market rate currently?
Currently, it's on the way up, because the economy is restarting, but, you know, nobody knows where things are going because of COVID. And it also generally goes up during the summer, and apparently, the summer and the winter. And then there are kind of troughs in between. I think what they call the shoulder, the shoulderish season.
So you're better opting in during the shoulder season?
Well, that's a good point.
Possibly?
That's a good point. Rockland Community Power program started in September. That's when the rates were negotiated. So I don't know if that helped to get better rates.
Okay.
Yeah. But that's the area of expertise of the administrator. They'll advise, and believe me, they want to get you the best rate that they can. That's what they do. So they'll advise, and they'll look at the energy market ahead, and they'll talk to the companies, and then they'll advise the communities on when they feel it's best to launch.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. I just want to mention that I'm also glad to supply references from the other communities, so.
So what are the communities in Rockland County?
In Rockland Community Power.
Right.
You know, maybe you want to talk to the other villages, for example.
Okay.
Which villages have signed up already, sis?
There are four villages in, Nyack, South Nyack, Upper Nyack, and the village of Haverstraw. And I'm sure any of them would be glad to talk to you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have a presentation by Real Term Energy. Mr. Paul Vessel.
Good evening, everybody. I think there was a handout here with the analysis that we did.
Yes.
So this is a good segue from the previous presentation, because we addressed the other side of energy, which is energy efficiency, and probably the single biggest impact you can make on reducing your consumption is with your streetlights. If you turn to page eight, we based our analysis on the inventory that you provided us, roughly 556 lights, and estimated what the project cost and the project savings would look like. So we ran two different analyses, one with standard photocells, that's dawn to dusk, and the other with smart lighting. A lot of the communities over the last two or three years have opted for smart lighting, because that gives you much more customization, the ability to dim and trim your lights, either individually on different streets or municipal-wide. If we move now to page 10, we ran an operating cost analysis, and you'll see that today, Suffolk is spending about $120,000 a year on your streetlights, because they're owned right now by the utility. You know, part of the project, as you've seen, and the first phase of the project involves taking ownership of your streetlights. We were involved in helping municipalities lobby in New York State, as well as throughout the Northeast. And legislation was passed in New York about four or five years ago, which gives you the opportunity to take ownership of these strategic assets. A lot of your neighbors have done that, and we've completed projects here in the region with Nyack, Piermont, Warwick, Florida, and others. You see, there's a compelling reason. From a carbon footprint perspective, you're lowering your annual consumption from 497,000 kilowatt-hours down to 133,000 kilowatt-hours. From an operational cost, you're dropping 80%. Today, you're spending $120,000. After you take ownership of the streetlights and we convert them to LED for you, that number drops to 23,000. The other driver for contemplating this conversion is on the quality side. Suffolk, like every other community in North America or around the world, is not optimally lit. You're overlit, you're underlit, you've got glare, you've got light loss everywhere. That's not your fault, it's the technology. High-pressure sodium, mercury vapor before that, these are not exacting light technologies. With the advent of LED, you have now light-emitting diodes that provide you the light in the most optimal way and the most optimal footprint with the least amount of energy expended. Furthermore, they last a lot longer. The lights that we would use for your project, they're all warranted for 100,000 hours, which equates to about 23.9 years. The other compelling driver for these projects is there's really little or no risk from a savings standpoint. Streetlights are a non-metered service. So once we know how many hours your lights are on, and we know the reduction in wattage, we know what your savings is going to look like. So very, very low risk, high predictability in terms of savings. So that's just a little background on why these projects make sense. Why would you want to work with us, with Real Term Energy? In North America, for municipal streetlight projects, we are probably the largest in terms of members of projects completed. We've completed over 300 municipal upgrades over the last eight years. There are certainly large energy companies that have done more lights. The folks that did New York, Chicago, Los Angeles, they've done a lot more lights than we have, but that's not our market. We're really focused on small and mid-sized communities, and almost 95% of all the projects that we've done have been in the Northeast. So all of our personnel, all of our engineers, they're all based here. The other reason why people are looking at taking over their streetlights from the utility, and this might seem futuristic to you today, but there's a whole line of applications and services now that are layered onto the streetlights. They may not make any sense for Suffolk today, but tomorrow, in a year, two years, three years, with the advent of 5G, with the economical integration of public Wi-Fi, noise sensors, air quality sensors, electronic vehicle charging modules that are integrated into the streetlights, these assets, these streetlights, are becoming more and more strategic and more and more valuable to municipalities. So we're not just a streetlight company, we're a smart city, smart lighting company. And part of the project, and again, I'm not here to sell you bells and whistles and things that you might not need and you can't take advantage of, but the project, the beginning of the project starts with a consultation to learn about what you're trying to do, what's your vision for the future, and how can we integrate the streetlight infrastructure to deliver some of those services tomorrow for you. Just a couple more words about us. We're a division of Real Term out of Annapolis, Maryland. Real Term is the largest owner and operator of on-airport infrastructure in North America. They have about $6.5 billion of assets at 37 international airports. They're maintenance, UPS, and FedEx. And they became very, very interested in driving energy efficiency with this footprint of assets that they've owned and operated since 1991. We're their first energy division. There's another division called Brainbox. It's the first developer of artificial intelligence for building energy management.
Excuse me, one second.
And lastly, we had the fortune of being recognized by the World Bank a year and a half ago for establishing best practices in doing municipal streetlight conversions. So I'll leave it up. I want to leave a lot of time for questions, because this is an important project for the village, and I want to make sure that everybody understands, you know, sort of all the details of the project.
So I liked the presentation. Can you hear me?
Sir?
Yeah, okay. Thank you for your presentation. Can you elaborate a little bit on the extras of the Wi-Fi enabling and/or the electric charging? What are those points?
So what's happened over, really, over the last three to five years, a lot of these technologies and a lot of the suppliers have figured out how to integrate these applications within the streetlight. When I talk about the streetlight, you've got the luminaire, which is a light itself, and then you have the brains that sit on top of it, which today is the photocell, tomorrow it's the smart lighting controls. So you have, for example, for public Wi-Fi, you have a plug-in, a Wi-Fi plug-in that plugs right into the smart control adapter and provides you with Wi-Fi connectivity. Likewise, with air quality control, it's a sensor that also plugs right into the smart control module. Electronic vehicle charging stations go into the base of the pole. There, if you opt for, you know, for that solution, you'll have to sit down with Orange and Rockland, because we'll be consuming more electricity to deliver that service, right? And you don't actually own that part of the infrastructure. And throughout New York State and throughout the Northeast, when you take ownership of the streetlight assets, which really buying is the mast arm out to the fixture, O and R and the other utilities. is the mast arm out to the fixture, ONR and the other utilities continue to take to retain ownership of the pole itself.
So and then so to to take advantage of those integrations, you need to op- option two.
That's right.
Smart control.
So let's talk about specifically about smart controls. What what do smart controls enable you to do? From a quality of service standpoint, the only way you know that a light is out today is to visually inspect it, right? With smart controls, they're tied into a central management system so that if a light is off or is sick, when I say sick, it means it's starting to fail, that signal is sent and we can be now proactive instead of reactive. Um, you're not going to have to wait for somebody to visually inspect that a light is out, which might take a week or it might take a month. You'll know it immediately. So better service. Um, it gives you the ability to customize lighting. Some of the applications that we've seen now, um, if you have, let's say, what is it, Lafayette Street here, which is your main, uh, street with restaurants and nocturnal activity, um, some towns and villages, they program the smart controls to give higher light intensity a closing time to provide more safety and security. And then once all the places are closed, then those lights start to dim down. So that's one one application.
Very good. Thank you.
In calculating the offset in price to run these LED fixtures instead of the conventional ones, I know here in the village, in some cases, we've already converted some of the lights to LED. So that, you know, that would essentially be a one-for-one, I would think, yes?
I'm not sure if I understand the question.
In other words, in other words, you're proposing swapping out all the lamps to LED, yes?
The analysis that we ran was based on your on your in- on the inventory of lights that you have. Are you saying that some of these lights?
I think I think numerous lights throughout the village, not not a large percentage, but a percentage, a small percentage are already LED. We've, uh, had some LED lights, I believe, put in by ONR.
Yeah, a very small percentage.
Yes, small percentage.
So so I'll walk you very, very quickly through the steps of the project. So if we would we would detect that in the first phase of the project, which is a GIS audit. We'll physically audit each and every light in the village, and we're collecting data, offset from the curb, width of the street, roadway classification, pedestrian conflict. All of this data then becomes critical in designing photometrically the most optimum and safe lighting for the village. But at the same time, as you said, Stephen, we're identifying which, if any, of those luminaires have already been converted.
Right.
They may have been properly converted, they may not have been. You're not going to try to add cost on the onto the project if you've got good designed photometric luminaires that are already up.
But would those lights, the current lights, probably are owned by ONR, I would think. So would those still, they would still be exchanged for your lights, correct?
Right, right. Unless ONR has changed the rules, it's it's usually all or nothing. You buy all of the assets or or none of them.
What do you actually do with the the yarm? Do you do you remove the yarm?
Um, mast arm replacement and removal, on the average, and we've done 425,000 units over the last eight years, on the average, only 1% to 2% of the mast arms need to be replaced. The vast majority are going to be good, and they'll be good for another 20 or 30 years.
So mostly you replace is the lighting and the?
Well, the 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 majority of the of the work is replacing the the fixtures. So taking the existing high-pressure sodium fixture and replacing that with an LED and either a standard photocell or a smart control.
I know in the past when we explored this, that we needed some type of cutoff switch or something along those lines.
So that's the that that is a fuse and a fuse holder, okay? Um, there's a demarcation point between the grid and the municipal side, right? And that's and that's delineated via a a simple fuse and a fuse holder. It's a, you know, there are some utilities that don't mandate that separation or demarcation. We think it's a good idea. Um, it's smart for the utility and it's smart for you. If anything should happen to that light, once you have ownership of it, we simply shut off the fuse. Anybody can go work on it without disturbing the utility side of the of the grid. The other concern that a lot of villages have or small municipalities have, whoops. I'm just going to talk without this.
I don't know if we can hear you. Hold on, we have Bruce coming up. I don't even know if this is working. That's that was my next question. Where would the maintenance aspect come in? I think you can step back up to the mic, please.
With the 400,000 or so fixtures that we have operating as long as eight eight years now, the average failure rate is about 0.35%, okay? So, um, your high-pressure sodium fixtures fail on the average of 25% of those fixtures fail every year, right? So the maintenance costs and the maintenance volume is really, really low. Um, not to say that you or any other municipality should start a maintenance service within the within the village. That doesn't make sense. Um, you can sub it all out to us. Um, we have a whole maintenance platform, which is user-friendly. Um, one click, you send out a report. Uh, we manage the warranties. We manage the local contractor, who will be the ones with the bucket trucks, and the lineman who will actually replace the fixtures. Um, and we'll make sure it's done promptly and within warranties.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
No, wonderful presentation.
Like a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Chief Jeremy Kaffa, Suffolk Fire Department.
Good evening, Village Board. Uh, first up on the agenda for this evening is a new member, Brian Antonuti, over the age of 18, for the hook and ladder.
I have a resolution accepting Brian Antonuti as a new member over 18 in the hook and ladder. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next resolution is for two new members for the volunteer hose company, both over 18, Zach Borden and George Castro.
So I have separate resolutions. The first resolution is accepting Zachary Borden as a new member over 18 in the hose company. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Second, trustee Saverman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution is accepting Jorge Castro as a new member over 18, volunteer hose company. Do I have a motion?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next item, I wasn't sure if it required a resolution or not, uh, being that there would be people other than members at the firehouse. Um, ex-chief Mike Lepore finishes term back in 2020. Due to COVID, we never had our annual dinner that year, so we're looking to do a semi-formal annual dinner at the firehouse on September 25th for Mike. Uh, there will be guests, family, and children, and some other outsiders. So that's why we're seeking a resolution from the village to get approval.
So we do have a resolution authorizing the Village of Suffolk Fire Department permission to use the volunteer hose company, one, for a semi-formal dinner to celebrate ex-chief Michael Lepore on Saturday, September 25th, 2021, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and the rain date is October 2nd, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
And just a side note with that, we will, uh, be speaking with Avon to get permission to use their parking lot for parking. And letters will also be going out to the residents on Cross Street, specifically 3 Cross Street, that we will have an event that evening. So
Perfect.
Everybody's aware ahead of time. Um, the next item is just, uh, so the village knows, on September 4th, we'll be hosting our family day. This year, we're going to be doing it at Rock and Boulder's. The there's a game, and there'll be a barbecue after. So for the day, for that time period, we will have a neighboring department covering the village. Uh, next is the sale of the American Le France fire truck. Uh, I'm asking for that to be tabled so I can have further discussion with the treasurer, Mike Janito.
Okay.
Next will be, I'm seeking permission to use the New York State Vehicle Marketplace to solicit bids for two new chief vehicles. If that's okay with the Village Board. This is under capital projects. However, the treasurer, Janito, had also mentioned that they were going to be using the ARPA funds for that?
Yes, there may be. So I would I would, um, explore the possibility in the marketplace.
Okay.
Does the board have any consideration on that?
That's where we purchased the last vehicle from. It's basically a state-run website. We put the specifications for the vehicles in there, and all the, uh, the authorized bidders throughout the state have an opportunity to place bids.
Keeping them Chevys?
I'm hoping so.
Okay.
Depending on cost.
Perfect. Um, while you're here, I'll just bring up for discussion, um, bringing to the board's attention, the Suffolk Fire Department would like to host a car show as they did last year on September 26th. When is the, uh, semi-formal?
The night before.
Right.
It'll be interesting.
Okay. Fire Department will host the car show September 26th, the rain date of October 3rd. We did it last year. Is that, uh, is that okay with the board?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Mr. Barone, will you be attending again?
I will be there again.
Okay.
Okay, so we can move forward with that, Jeremy, if you could move.
I won last year, Jeremy.
Did you?
Yeah.
It was in my car, but it was the one she drove.
Perfect.
And, uh, lastly, I just wanted to, uh, touch on the discussion. We had the previous board meeting on the funds for training. Mr. Alpert, did you ever reach out to Bergen County? Did you have any discussions with them?
I didn't reach out, no.
Okay. So what I will be, I will be seeking permission at the next board meeting for some funds. I will speak to Mr. Janito where they may be obtained from to, uh, conduct some training at the Bergen County Training Center.
Why don't we set up a meeting, Jeremy?
What's that?
Why don't we set up a meeting?
Okay.
With Mr. Janito, and and we'll discuss it.
That's what, yeah, that's fine.
All right?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, that's all. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Can you let us know what happens at the end of that meeting, Ed, please?
Sure. Yeah, so what, uh, next up is Lieutenant Martinez from the Suffolk Police Department who will provide us an update, an update only at this time, as we will be motioning to go into an executive session if the board so chooses.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, this is the update for the police department for July 20, 2021. In the month of July, the police department responded to 907 calls for service. In addition to our no more operations, we held a presentation at the community center to educate Suffolk seniors on how to protect themselves from identity theft and related scams that are currently being perpetrated in our area. The presentation was given by Officer Coretta and was well attended and received by the seniors. We plan on holding similar type of events in the future, and we'll keep the board apprised as they come up. As the board is aware, several years ago, we received a Humvee through the 1033 Military Surplus Program to be utilized for off-road rescue operations and natural disasters. After discussion with the board, we transferred the vehicle through the 1033 program to the Hempstead Police Department, who took custody of it on July 26th of this year. I would like the, uh, to request that the board nominate Mr. Felix Arresto to the position of part-time police officer. This will fill a vacancy for said position that is currently budgeted for and remains vacant. Chief Lockland emailed the board and with Mr. Arresto's credentials and history, but to reiterate, he is a retired police officer with 27 years of law enforcement experience and holds several useful certifications, including Level 2 Commercial Vehicle Enforcement. This nomination will allow us to have Mr. Arresto cleared by the Rockland County Department of Personnel for appointment by the board. That's all I have.
Okay, so I have the resolution authorizing the nomination of Felix Arresto to the position of police officer part-time. Do I have a motion?
Motion. I'll go second. Make it easy.
Got it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Thank you. Culture and Recreation, Ms. Mills is not with us this evening, but we do provide an update here. She continues to, um, update the public via Facebook in constant contact. Chair exercises on Monday at 10:00 AM, Stay Fit Exercise Monday at 11:00, Chair Yoga, Tuesdays, Thursdays, 10:00 AM, Zoom on Fridays at 10:00. Office hours for Assemblyman Lawler was held on August 6th, Senator Melnick on August 10th, Suffolk Senior Picnic, August 12th. Pool closes on Labor Day, Midget Mountain Football Bonfire Friday, September 10th, 9/11 Ceremony Saturday, September 11th, Lions Club and the Village of Suffolk Dog Day Event Sunday, September 12th, Street Fair, Suffolk Chamber of Commerce, Sunday, September 19th, Suffolk Day, October 2nd, rain date, Sunday, October 3rd. The daytime activities for that day are 11 to 3, and the evening activities are at 7. Also have three resolutions here, appoint, one resolution here appointing Mandy Fleishman as lifeguard seasonal at the Suffolk Memorial Pool, the summer of 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution, appointing Julia Marusik, Marusik, as lifeguard seasonal at the Suffolk Memorial Pool. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution, appointing Nate Bootner as lifeguard seasonal at the Suffolk Pool. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Mr. Fred Reller is not with us. Next up is Mr. Charles Zewicki, Department of Public Works.
Wait, what about public participation?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I screw? Oh, I'm sorry. Public participation, stand by, Mr. Zewicki. This time, I'd like to invite the public to participate. You're limited to a four-minute timeframe. Please approach the mic and state your name and address. Hello.
Good evening. My name is Judy. Is it, can you hear me? I have to stand on my tiptoes.
You can bend the mic a little, maybe.
My name is Judy Silver. I live in Bonneair Park. Oh, thank you. And, um, I'm very much in favor of what Peggy Kurtz talked about, that program, to have clean energy. As we all know, we've had many disasters, and, um, a lot of that is from the carbon footprint. So if we can reduce that, I'm very much in favor of it. Thank you.
How about the LED light transformation?
I don't know enough about that. I'm more familiar with Peggy Kurtz's program. I'd I'd like to read it myself and look at it and see if I personally have any questions. Thank you.
Would you like a presentation that you can review for the LED light program? We have an extra presentation that you could take a look at if you wish.
Absolutely.
And Ed, can we please put that on the website?
The LED.
Put it on the website.
And I suggest that we put it on the website, too, if we could, please?
Okay.
This one's for the clean energy. She wants the LED.
The LED. Hold on, take mine. Oh, I might have notes in it, too.
Do you have yours handy?
Here's a clean copy.
I have a clean copy.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Please state your name and address.
Name is Michael Curley, 84, Eng Avenue. And I just want to point out, in the last meeting I was here on July, July 12th, I think it was there, the, I had brought up the Ethics Code and how I felt the mayor had violated the Ethics Code and how I explained to the Board and to the public that violation of the Ethics Code that was put in place in 2016 is still in effect. As I made my presentation, the mayor decided to, he wanted to speak. The mayor then explained at that point that that Ethics Code was amended and rescinded. Well, that Ethics Code, to this day, has not been amended or rescinded. It's still the same Ethics Code that's there. I also respectfully asked Mr. Magrino about it. He decided he want to comment on it, okay? Well, I'm advising Mr. Markounis, and I'm advising the Village Attorney, that that X Code still is with the state of New York and it still exists. The only thing that was done, there was a Purb hearing, which I foiled since that last meeting, and in that Purb hearing, the Village realized that it wasn't enforceable against CSEA employees and CSEA employees only. And not only did I get that foil, but I also realized then after, before, afterwards, that on May 25th, Ed Markounis, the Village Attorney, and numerous other people in this Village, got an email from our other Village Attorney explaining to you people, to you, Mr. Markounis, because you asked for it to be identified, explaining to you that that X Code was in effect and it was only not enforceable against the CSEA. I don't know if this refreshes anybody's recollection here, but it exists, you have it in your records. Okay, so now, so being that that law existed, the mayor then committed, if, if it goes through the process, it's punishable by up to a $10,000 fine and a Class A misdemeanor. It's still in effect, it's never been amended, and actually, you were told by the other attorney, Mr. Glickel, that it's somewhat of a long process. And he explained to you what you would have to do to do it. You'd first, the only way to change the law is to do a new law. So you have to rescind that and then go back to the 70, 71 law. So that was, so, let's, so that, that was, you misrepresented or you lied to the public, Mr. Mayor, and I hope it's just because you made a mistake and you misrepresented, because the public doesn't deserve that, okay? So not only by doing this, by turning over a tape to a person that has an action against us, okay, or their representative, you now have put the Village in a position where it could be hundreds of thousands of dollars. And also, anyone you tape has a legal action against you also and against this village. And I'll say again, it should go against your house, not our house. And just for Mrs. Smith, I asked for a FOIA request and you, you actually gave me back the same one I presented at the last meeting, so it was never changed. No, it never, I asked for the new law that the mayor said, you gave me the same one. But I just want to point out, when I mention the word clerk, it's not you, and I don't want anyone to think it's you, okay? As we all know, you were, you were voted on by this Board, well, you announced this decision, okay? And, and I hear things in my restaurant, people talking, and I hear you doing a good job, and I thank you because the people needed that, okay? And you're not the good, the right man for the job, you're not the right woman for the job, you're the right person for the job in this village. And I thank you for that, because we needed that in this village, okay? And, but I just think it's important, I think the mayor owes the public an apology, okay? Because Mayor, and if you don't know, I'm letting you know, and it's a good thing you have me, okay? The law was never rescinded, has not been rescinded, and it was never amended, Mr. Mayor, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Curley.
All right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay, Mr. Zawiki, please.
Good evening, Board. The first resolution is authorization for application of payment number two for Dubury Engineers for the hardening of water treatment plant and backup power for critical facilities projects in the amount of $20,154.50.
So have the resolution authorizing, authorization for application payment number two for Dubury Engineers. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, how many payments will there be if this is payment number two? What's, how many more are following this?
This is the final payment.
Final.
Final payment.
Oh, second and final, very good, thank you. Appreciate that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Authorization for application of payment number five for Covino and Sons for the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project in the amount of $67,079.50.
Have the resolution authorizing payment number five to Covino and Sons Construction Company for the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, same, same question. Is this the final payment on that as well?
No.
No, how many more are expected?
Um, I would say there'd be probably two more.
Two more, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Authorization for application of payment number one for TM, TM Brennen Services, Inc. for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project contract 1H in the amount of $5,035.
Have the resolution authorizing payment number one to TM Brennen Services, Inc. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Trustee Alpert.
Second.
Do I have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Authorization for application of payment number one for Capole Services, Inc. for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project contract 1G in the amount of $118,169.47.
Motion. Oh, sorry, Ed.
Have the resolution authorizing payment number one to Capole, Capole Services. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Authorizing the award of Gosha Project Number NYCR 0256, Village of Suffolk Backup Power for Critical Facilities to Hush Maintenance Corp. in the amount of $369,000.
Have the resolution authorizing the award of the Gosha Project 0256, Village of Suffolk Backup Power for Critical Facilities to Hush Maintenance Corporation. Have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So this was an award of a bid. Were there other bids? I'm just curious how many bids there were for this project.
Uh, yes, um, there... Hold on one second. I believe there was three bids received on that project. And there were the low bidder. Three bidders, there were the low bidder.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, next last item, appointment of Mr. Eric Anderson of the Water and Sewer, to the Water and Sewer System Mechanic One position at a rate of $36.13 per hour.
Have the resolution approving the promotion of Eric Anderson to the position of Sewer and Water System Mechanic One. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Janito is not here with us. Have a resolution authorizing transfer of unspent project funds, funds from Project 2016-006 Sewer System Improvements to Sewer Fund. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Alpert.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next resolution authorizing transfer of unspent project funds from Capital Project Fund to the General Fund. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Another, another resolution authorizing transfer of unspent project funds from Project 2016-007 Water System Improvements to the Water Fund. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution, amending Capital Projects Funds and the Sewer Fund Budget. Do I have a mo, a motion?
Trustee Corrigan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution authorizing close of various capital projects. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution, amend budgets for Project 2018-001 and the Sewer Fund. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution to amend the 2021-2022 General Fund Budget for Comprehensive Plan Services. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next resolution, authorize the Treasurer to attend NICOM 2021 Fall Training. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's an additional resolution that I have under mine, but I'll read it here. Authorize the mayor to attend NICOM Fall Training School. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Next resolution is the Bond Resolution. Bond Resolution of the Village of Suffolk, New York, adopted August 9, 2021, authorizing the construction of improvements to the Village, Village Water System, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof of $3,520,191 and appropriating said amount for such purpose, including the expenditures of $2,020,191 in grant funds to be received to pay for part of said appropriations and authorizing the issuance of bonds in the principal amount of $1,500 to finance the balance of said appropriation. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
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 Uh, Trustee Saban, I'm sorry. And the second is Trustee Barone. All in favor?
Aye.
Now I'm going to do a roll call. Roll call vote, Trustee Alpert?
Yes.
Trustee Barone?
Yes.
Trustee Corrigan?
Yes.
Trustee Saban?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes. Mr., yes. Mr. Magrino.
Yeah, I have nothing further other than the public hearings that we held, that were held, but there was one item that was skipped, Police Department, I'm going to ask the Board to go back into executive session, discuss that matter, and then come out and vote or not, depending upon the discussion.
Thank you.
So you're going to go into executive session now?
At the end.
At the end. Trustees?
Uh, yes, I have, Rob and I have gone over what we talked about with the media, social media, and all communications out to the Village. Unfortunately, with vacation, restraints that had happened in the last two weeks, I'm asking if everybody could figure out if we could have a special meeting and spend 15 minutes on a special meeting within the next week and get this ironed out and done so that we can move forward with it. Let's start with your schedule, Rob.
Thank you. Can we do next week, like Monday or Tuesday, or?
Monday.
Actually, Monday or?
I wouldn't, I won't be available till the...
I'm good for Wednesday or Friday this week, but next week's a little tighter.
Can anybody do Thursday?
I can do Wednesday if necessary, or Thursday if necessary.
Thursday's no good for me. I'll be away for a full month.
I leave on the 18th. So, I would like to see if we could get this done, then maybe Monday?
Monday to 16th?
Okay, well, then you're not going to be here. How many, just?
I can make the 16th.
Monday to 16th? 7:00 p.m.?
Is that okay?
No, I'll be away for a whole month.
He's away.
It's starting tomorrow.
He's away the whole month?
It's, I can try, it's, it's not guaranteed. I can do this Wednesday or this Friday, but I don't know that I can do the 16th.
16th works.
I guess so.
16th works.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, 16th?
That's only three, yeah, it's on, okay, so, um...
Who's, who's available on the 16th?
Steven said maybe, he can't guarantee it, Fred is not.
Oh, so it's me, Charles, and Charles, are you available?
I'm available on the 19th.
I'm not.
Is it something that could wait till our next Board meeting?
I'd prefer it not to.
Because then we have Fred back and, you know, everyone can be available.
How about the 30th?
Trustee Corrigan, can this wait till our next Board meeting in September?
I'd prefer it not to, but I guess so.
All right, so we'll work on a date. If there's another date that comes up, we'll take that, or if not, we'll hold off until the next meeting. Okay. Any further? Okay. Next, I have a resolution, approval of the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting for July 12th. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution, I have appointing Andrew M. Ron- Next resolution, I have appointing Andrew M. Lachlan to the position of police chief permanent, whereas resolution of-- whereas resolution number 169 of 2020, as adopted on October 5, 2020, the village board of trustees acting as police commissioners, appointed Police Lieutenant Andrew Lachlan to the position of police chief provisional of the Suffering Police Department, pending the Lachlan County Commissioners of Personnel certification of a eligibility list for use in making a permanent appointment to the position of police chief. Whereas on July 16th, the Lachlan County Commissioner of Personnel certified Chief Lachlan's rank on the civil service list of eligibles, number 21004, as number one among the top three eligibles willing to accept appointment to the position of police chief Village of Suffering. Now therefore, it is resolved that the board of trustees acting as police commissioners of the Village of Suffering do hereby appoint Andrew M. Lachlan to the position of police chief permanent, and the mayor is hereby authorized to report the board's permanent appointment of police chief to the Commissioner of Personnel. And it is further resolved that pending the execution and board approval of an agreement between the village and Chief Lachlan establishing the terms and conditions of his employment, Chief Lachlan's salary and benefits shall continue as set forth in the aforementioned resolution number 169 of 2020. A motion to approve the foregoing resolution was made by Mayor Markounis and seconded by trustee--
I seconded.
Solomon, and passed unanimously by the board. All in favor?
Aye.
I wish we would have done this when Andy was actually here, or Chief was actually here. It would have been nice to give it to him in person.
It sure would be. Congratulations, Chief Lachlan. Great success, and thank you for everything you have done for the village. All in favor? Well, we do have someone here from the police department. So it's confirming the promotion of James Giannatino Jr. to the position of Police Lieutenant Permanent, whereas by resolution number 48 of 2021, as adopted on April 5, 2021, the village board of trustees acting as police commissioners did promote Police Sergeant James Giannatino Jr. to the vacated position of Police Lieutenant, which promotion was contingent upon the permanent appointment of Lieutenant Andrew M. Lachlan to the position of Police Chief. And whereas by resolution-- all right, the board of trustees acting as police commissioners have this day appointed Andrew M. Lachlan to the position of Police Chief Permanent. Now therefore, it is resolved that the board of trustees acting as police commissioners of the Village of Suffering do hereby confirm the permanent promotion of James Giannatino Jr. to the position of Police Lieutenant, and the mayor is hereby authorized to report the requisite change to the employment status to the Commissioner of Personnel, and is further resolved that pending the execution and board approval of an agreement between the village and Lieutenant Giannatino establishing the terms and conditions of his employment, Lieutenant Giannatino's salary and benefits shall continue as set forth in the aforementioned resolution number 48 of 2021. The motion approving the foregoing resolution was made by Mayor Markounis and seconded by trustee--
Solomon.
Solomon, and passed by the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Lieutenant Giannatino. Great job. Thank you very much, Lieutenant. And I had an item G. What did I do with that? So under the mayor, I had item G is a special use permit for Selena Akola of 108 Washington Avenue, and I believe we need to have further discussion of that and present it to the board for review. So we will table that until the next workshop. Okay. Motion to enter into an executive session.
Employment-related matter.
Employment-related matter.
Motion.
Do I have a motion? A second? Trustee Albert and trustee Solomon, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We'll be returning.
Yes, we will be resuming, and I think it will be about 10 minutes. Bruce? All right, thank you.